You are road hall. I'm a part of my garden. I'm Rick here. Manuel, you're present.
Mr. Benny, please.
And the mayor's mic is not here this evening. We have citizens' participation. We have Jerry Parker. It's the floor is open to you. Do you know what you want to talk to us about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, sir. He didn't say it out loud. Yeah, for everybody to hear.
I have two forty foot container at my home. It's been there for fifty years. Back in the day, mine. Uh, I don't work here because I'm usually in California working. I'm a customer of hardworking out of California. Okay, and I have a collection. I have an Alstec engine. Also have thirty one four boat trip, a thirty four four pickup, and a fifty six Jeep bur. Okay, the Jeep or not ten years. But that's my trade, that's what I did in L.A. Also looked around for a few Murphy back in nineteen seventy seven. Martin five, I'll push up there. I was trained by Sam Barrett, which is George Burkes' brother. I worked with Ginnie Winfield. I worked for Ed Long. I worked for Bruton. And also worked with Jayman. And also worked at Burnstake. I've been meaning, which is now in, uh, up through Curville, I think it is. It took the road to last year. It took the world while we were in it, I think it is. But anyway, I've been here since nineteen eighty three. I used to live in Fort T. And I got three grandsons who want to learn how to build cars. And I want to teach them. The seventy seven year old and the government son. So, I don't want to ruin my farm. But I appreciate it by their heads or knees. There's a canyon in the front. If not, then I'll go ten from around here or I'll move back to the back where it works. I just don't want my heart to be broken. You know, and I'm taking my heart, though, because some people don't want to have. You know what I'm saying? Some people chirp him or whatever. Use your government five years, you're gonna be seven. But I'm a, I'm a heart protector and I'll build three lot. I'll do all myself. Nobody does anything for me. And one thing I can do is build more than three, but I'll build a whole car for you.
I understand that.
I'd like to keep those containers.
Have you talked to Cody or Roxanne at all with the city or?
Uh, they said I gotta give her those. They're rich. And I can't have them there. They gotta go. That guy David told me the same thing. You know, so I, I've been here since day, day three. I've been here with top number one, one here. It's up for MacArthur. I got on the whole thing. But I gotta bring my family along when I was very young. If my wife wanna go, she can go. It's family, so.
And we'd have to look into what the ordinance is saying that before we can say anything. And we'd have to go off a rough and date and, you know, and what Cody and them do. I know there was a, if they were here before a certain time, they would be like grandpa or whatever, but outside of that, I don't know.
Fifteen when we came here.
Okay. Yeah. What property?
I'm very common.
Yep.
I'm always very common. I didn't know any of that, or him, that's what you call it.
Annexation, okay. So you're all where, coffee on the road or where?
Back here.
I was right there on the road.
Behind here.
Yeah.
We'd have to get them to look into it. If it was after, or you had them there before the annexation or whatever, then the city and the attorney.
They're in the front, they're in the back for either hiding or have we increased that on the school and grow.
Let us let them look into it and see what we can do to help you out. All right? And just make sure Roxanne has your phone number and we'll get with you whatever you need to see.
I'll call the miles, I'll phone for you.
Okay. That will work. We do appreciate it.
We like them.
Roxanne is right here and then Cody is the city manager for a while.
Yeah. I'm sorry. But anyway.
Hopefully they can work something out with you.
Yeah, well, I worked on that because I'm, I'm retired, you know, this year. I'm, I'm new, I'm tired, you know, I'm only about fourteen years old.
All right.
You know, so.
Well, we do appreciate you bringing it to our table.
Good.
Thank you.
So have a good day, Governor. Likewise.
And we don't have anybody else for our citizens' comments. We've got under the general consent agenda. Uh, we've got number one is approval of the city council meeting, minute from September twenty one, twenty twenty three. Number two is approval of the previous month's bills, page and financial reports. Number three is the approval of the investment report for the prior quarter. Do I have anybody want to make a motion on that or?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent and the items.
Do I have a second, or a board, take a second?
I noted that you got the corrections. It can carry out there wasn't correction. Corrected right in my, I, I just heard.
Okay. So everybody in favor?
I have to abstain because I will be last one.
Okay. Manuel abstained. Everybody else is in favor? Uh, motion is passed. Was there any questions at all on any of that or not?
Uh, we've asked already. Okay. We approved the three together with the, with one, two and three.
Yeah, one, two and three we approved. The next item is item number four is discussed and possible action regarding ordinance ten nineteen dash twenty twenty three dash one approving the twenty twenty three annual service plan update to the service and assessment plan, including the assessment role for the Hickory Ridge Public Improvement District in accordance with chapter three seventy two, Texas Local Government Code. And we have, I guess Kirk McDaniel is here from P three. And he's going to advise us or inform us of what's going on through the TURS and the kids.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time, Matt. Uh, my name is Kirk McDaniel with Hickory Ridge. New service updated tourist administrator for the city. Uh, the item for you now is just a standard item that's required to be updated under the statute of chapter three, uh, excuse me, chapter three seventy two, Local Government Code. So, uh, council previously entered a development agreement, previously approved with the P, um, for the period of development. Every year you're required to approve a service assessment plan update. And so this is this year's service assessment plan update. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there any changes from the previous years or is it just more of a nice update entry bill?
The, the main piece that changes is the assessment role, which is the bill that's actually going to go out to those property owners. And so that gets updated each year. But it stays relatively the same as the previous years.
Does anybody else have any concerns or comments or? It is a lot to read. Because you have to have it to keep things legal. You have the ordinance, you have the good ordinance.
I'll make a motion for ordinance ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty three to approving of the twenty twenty three annual service plan updating to the service and assessment plan, including the assessment role for the Hickory Ridge Public Improvement District.
Do I have a second? Always on the second. Do I have a vote in favor? Five oh.
Thank you, sir.
That one did pass. And item number five is the other item that's been involved with as well, from what I understand, and it's the discussing possible action regarding resolution ten dash nineteen dash twenty twenty three one R approving of the twenty twenty three tax increment reinvestment zone report or reinvestment zone number three, City of Elmendorf taxes making certain findings, providing a sober village call and providing for an effective date. And the TURS is one thing, but the P is the public improvement part, right? That's the, the parks and everything else that they're trying to do?
They are two different, uh, special districts. So the P involves an assessment that's letting on the property to fund public infrastructure. In this case, the TURS is primarily over the same boundary. It also includes the commercial aspect of the period of development. So it's a little bit larger than just the P boundary. Uh, but it's another tool to help reimmerse developer for that public infrastructure that they'll be putting in.
And is that an additional cause that goes to every home buyer?
No, uh, I, I have a brief presentation that I can provide on TURS and how they work. Uh, because I know it's been some time since I was worried about the TURS. Um, so I can kind of go and divide it by our, uh, our council.
Those who haven't heard it, copy.
We do.
Pass one off.
We're, we're actually, we are good with it and appreciate listening, but if anybody is interested.
The only question I had was, I was on the TURS three board way back.
Yes.
All right, is this the same thing?
Same thing.
We didn't abolish it and then just rename it?
No.
Okay.
No, no. You were part of the TURS three board when it was first, uh, when it was first created. And then I believe you had to be replaced because you got on council. So it didn't.
But it's the same board?
Yeah.
And I do want to answer your question, Council. Remember, how to, uh, the way the TURS works is it's an allocation of the property tax dollars, city property tax dollars that the residents are going to pay. And so it's taking a portion of those tax dollars that those residents pay and allocate it to the TURS.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just to hear it out loud, it says by the time of the council meeting, this report should have been accepted by the TURS number three board. So has it been set?
Yes, ma'am. So the TURS board met earlier tonight and they approved and they approved and they recommended approval to the city council of this twenty twenty three report.
Does anybody have anything else? Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead and vote on this one as well. Do I have a motion for item number five?
I'll make a motion for resolution ten dash nineteen dash twenty three, I R, approving a twenty twenty three tax increment reinvestment zone report for reinvestment zone number three.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay, it's always made second. Those in favor? Five oh, that one has passed. Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
You as well.
We have item number six is discuss and possible action regarding the quest by Samantha Angel Romals for the conditional use review of property located in the single family residential district R one. The legal description is sixteen six five six Borregas Road in the city of Elmendorf, Texas. Property ID number one, three, four, nine, eight, five, two. And we had the zoning board meet on this one, right?
Yes.
Hope for their recommendations.
We recommend that you agree the, um, the request.
Is that the one I was not allowed to talk to?
Yeah, that was the next one.
No, that was. But again, he would have told you this.
I would have.
He would have.
Was there, what was the decision that they made? It was to leave it as is and allow a variance or?
Yeah, but it's part of, uh, the, the zoning code was to, is to allow for a conditional use. It basically, uh, doesn't change the zoning, which the zoning in this case is R one residential. It doesn't change the zoning, but allows you the ability to grant, uh, almost essentially a variance for conditional use for this property to be used for manufacturing.
Okay, and they're here, right?
There.
There you are. Have you all got anything you want to say or?
No, other than I just really need a home for my, my children. I'm a single mom, so it would really help if I can. Because I cannot afford to, I mean, they have the home, what you, what they're asking for right now. So if I can go the other way, it would help me out a lot.
So this is strictly for your, your, uh, personal use as a home?
Strictly for my, for my, um.
For her residence, correct?
Tell them what she'll tell us, tell us more.
It's all, it's, it's always a rural area. It started off rural. There's no one really around. There's no home in the areas that I will have. You know, anyone? I am also really far from the roads, so. She's waiting the best shouldn't be also like, it shouldn't be a bother to anybody else. No one would be in the neighborhood.
Tell them that's your property.
We didn't receive any objections or anything from neighbors around them?
No, I can't.
Okay, so we're good.
I want her to tell you all how she backed her property.
Okay, my father, my father-in-law passed away, Marcus Tobart. He passed away and the kids inherited. I have three children. Mine has been selling already, Tobart. So my husband got five acres. We, uh, instead of us keeping the land, we gave it to our five children. So she, we gave her the back because the boys, one at the front, they said, we keep her in the back, we'll keep her safe. She's in the back of the ranch. So that's the reason we gave her way back there. Otherwise she would have been in the front or here with me.
Yeah, and I know the access to the property is very narrow at the front, so.
But it is an inheritance.
But it is an inheritance.
And is it plotted? Uh, when you broke it down to five different?
It's, it's divided into only three kids. We couldn't do all five of them. So she got two and a half acres. One of the boys got an acre and the other boy got an acre. But they're, they're right in back of me, but like I said, she's, they put her in the back because she was a girl.
Of course.
They had come before.
They had come to us before they could to you.
Does anybody have?
Gardeners.
Gardeners. Does anybody have any questions or do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve over the request by Samantha Angel Romals for conditional use review of a property located in the single family residential district R one. The legal description is one, six, six, five, six Borregas Road in the city of Elmendorf, Texas. Property ID one, three, four, nine, eight, five, two.
Manuel, second. Manuel, it's made the second. Do I have a vote in favor by council? Here we go. You're good to go. Keep working with the, the guys up here, principal.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, it's all.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you for giving me my house back.
I'm happy for you, man. I really am, so. There's not much left on that road to develop. Most of it's sold off and, uh, very few pieces of property available. With that, we'll move on to item number seven. It's discuss and possible action regarding the quest for the Height Family Investment LLC for the conditional use review of properties located in the heavy industrial and manufacturing district M two. The legal descriptions are as follows. Seventy seven oh four East Loop sixteen oh four South, property ID one, five, nine, four, eight, six. And seven, six, nine, eight, East Loop sixteen oh four, property ID one, five, nine, four, eight, seven, in the city of Elmendorf, Texas. And this is another one that went through our review board as well, so.
Yes, and we also, um, um, voted, agreed to recommend approving this.
Okay. And like we said, we, we heard maybe there was one objection from somebody outside the city?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that was.
Correct one.
So we didn't have any other objections outside of that?
And Martha, I do have a question now that I can ask. I know you're looking at turning it into like an adult daycare or a daycare itself?
Yes.
It looks like, like a, a daycare and adult daycare.
So there's seven, there's two buildings.
That's, that's my question.
It's where the old ostrich plant used to be.
Oh.
Two big buildings.
I don't, I don't think we know that. I think that, that they, the daycare, unless they, there's not enough to do a daycare, enough business, and then they'll do adult. I, I don't think we know that. So if you grant it, you grant it to them to do whatever they feel best.
Is, and, and not, not in a bad way, but through experience, um, I've seen a lot of small cities have granted approvals. And, and honestly, I don't think I've ever seen a, a, one turn out to be good because of the lack of regulations and, and control and pretty much health and welfare. And I've not ever seen one turn out to be a good one. And I've already seen at least four or five in different small cities that have granted that and then comes back and bites you.
Aren't there safe guidelines when it comes to assisted care and nursing homes, that kind of stuff? There is.
There is, there is, but it's up to the state to do it. So, you know, the city of Elmendorf doesn't have any type of business licensing, uh, uh, ordinances or really any teeth to monitor and oversee it because we have no regular, the city has no regulations over the operation of a daycare or anything else. So it would default to state. Who, I mean, my understanding of how it works is they do, they do regular checks and audits of these things uh, and answer any complaints that come up. But, but Manuel's right. The city wouldn't have really involvement in it because we don't have the ordinances to.
Could we table this and have them come and talk to us?
That's up to you.
We don't have anybody.
They were told.
Somebody here to represent them right now to give us direction.
I think so.
Now, the, you make it a motion. The, the other thing I was thinking about too, doesn't the, the county medical director have some say so or not? To help, pardon me.
I don't know. But then within the city limits?
I know we, we've agreed to, you know, the city has agreed to take the county's appointed person in the medical field or things to open. Can we use their office to help guidance or something?
I mean, I know what you're talking about. That doesn't apply to this type of situation. I don't know if we could contract with the county. That's what we have to do if we wanted to use their services. And I, I honestly don't even know if they have that for this, for daycares. I do know that, you know, daycares are regulated and so are adults. And by the state, you have to have certifications and license and all that kind of stuff, but, uh.
But they'd have to have staff to be able to follow through a lot of legal. And, and that's where the limit is for one. If they really wanted to present it in such a strong case, it would have been here. That's my.
Was it, was, did you have anybody representing?
No.
No, we did.
Nobody could have.
And actually, we, we did have one neighbor on the, uh, plane zoning, and that was the reason, because they're not here. The other things we discussed that we all agreed on is there is a need in our area for childcare and adult care.
Oh, no doubt.
There is a need.
There is, and, and that's not, I'm not trying to take that away. I've just, it's the experience that, that I actually, like I said, hands-on experience, not just, you know, say so. And where I've actually seen it in smaller cities. And, and I just don't want that to come back and once it gets lost, uh, they'll come in and slap their hands and that's about it. And then they're gone again.
Do we have other ordinances that we need to be looking towards for that kind of business?
We could, but we'd have to, you'd have to be more staff, you know. Yeah, and they would have to be specially trained staff.
I just wondered if we had to have ordinances in place to oversee something like that rather than just to stay alone?
And we don't have to. I mean, we could, as Cody said, we can give business licenses and things along that line. But that would require quite a bit more staff.
Uh, the other thing in the letter, um, they sent that I read was that they have six other businesses, five of them in San Antonio and one in Pleasanton.
And they're all daycares.
Yeah, the other few ones about this one that Cody talked about last time is this piece of property would have, this would have been approved without having to come to the P N Z or the council, but they moved it from commercial, because this is an allowed use of commercial. Then it would not have to come here. They moved it to M two, the last purchaser did because they were going to do some manufacturing on that property. So if it would have been any old zoning or, the old zoning designation, they wouldn't have even had to come to council.
Right, right.
Well, there was a reason to have come here.
Well, yeah, that's why they did that, sure.
Well, actually, if anything bad happens there, they do have the adult or the childcare. It's up to the state to regulate everything for them. The city has nothing to do with it. And therefore, you know, with the city needing something like that, you're just opening the doors to those who really need that type of care. And, I mean, nothing's going to fall back on the city. All you're doing is permitting them to have something in the city that is available to citizens.
And, and again, I understand that, and where that falls in place is, I look at the long term, how is it going to affect the people who are there? If they don't meet the requirements, how is it going to affect their families and so on and so on? Like I said, it's just, it's just that I've had a bad taste because I've seen that happen.
Is there any word in your case three on these people? I'm not, I may be a good, good. They say they had locations in San Antonio's. Could we have any way of looking into that to see if there's been any complaints? Or issues? You know? Yeah. Because we, we, I, I would hate for us to bring somebody in and say, okay, we're trying to work with you and then find out these aren't people that should have been here to begin with, you know?
Although that's okay.
I, I don't know anything about them, is what my thing is. I'd like, you know, somebody, you know, standing up for them, you know, themselves as well as, you know, do they have recommendations from San Antonio? Or do they have recommendations from Pleasanton where they're already at? So, you know, based on that, that would help us too in our decision-making, so. We, we don't want to obdatch a problem child.
And again, I thought the whole thing on the table was, are we going to allow a commercial operation in a manufacturing code zone? That's what's in front of us, not whether they're going to operate a good business or a bad business. And I don't know that, and like Cody said, unless we get a lot more stat and get a lot more money, it's not up to the city to go enforce this. There's, there's already agencies in place for that.
Right.
And so that question, if you have that question, you're going to have that question to anybody that comes in here. And then next thing we know, we have all these new families with little kids that want a daycare readily available. And I understand, somebody mentioned the closest one is now on Foster Road. So if I have, if I'm a young family looking to buy in the area and buy a home and I look around and there's no daycare, or maybe I have, you know, someone that needs adult daycare, which I've worked with someone that needs an adult daycare, that has a brother that needs that, and looking around in the community, oh, they don't have that, don't care enough about little kids, then why am I going to live here? They're going to look at it that way too.
And I'll see that we're not against it. We know we want it, we need it, or no, that's what I, I honor representation. If you come and stand right there and say what you want, what you mean, that's representation.
That's true.
It, it's not just throw them to us and see what.
See if it sticks.
And I go along with you. Do you want a piece of this? I'm a second, okay? Sir.
Well, and we, I see it, I mean, okay, so it's going to hurt if we wait a little bit longer. Okay, this is, this is new to us too. If there's an adult daycare or childcare, of course, that would be wonderful. We want a good one, yes. That's not on the, like you said, the state. But we can hold off and do our homework and think about it and then we'll just, I mean, it's not going to hurt.
And inform decision more than just here it is.
Yeah, because then, I mean, you know, at least we made an informed decision, yes.
So do I have a motion to table it?
I make a motion to table it.
Manuel, it's place a motion?
Till, till when?
Till we can get a little bit of information, hopefully Cody can help a bit, but I mean...
Next one.
And do you, do you want to, do you want to stipulate that it's tabled until the...
They're able to come here.
They'll be able to appear and answer questions.
I'd like to have them on the council. If they can get in front of you, preliminary with why is whatever, and maybe there's some things they can answer right away.
Manuel's motion. So can you even ask them to bring copies of their state inspections on their other, on their...
Right, so there's people that themselves are able to go up and represent themselves.
Right.
And who's going to second it?
I agree.
Okay, Paul's seconded. Do I have a vote in favor by the council of table deciding? Five oh, two. Item number eight is discussing possible action regarding a proposed Texas alum, discharge elimination system. Permit number W Q zero, 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 five, four, three, six, zero, zero, zero. This item is specifically reserved for closed session, Texas Department, or Texas Government Code, section five, five, one, section zero, seventy-one in confrontation with the term. We need to make a motion to adjourn to be able to go into...
Oh, you can or we can...
But we have two closed sessions, so we make the motion to adjourn.
And the other motion, I'll just drop that down to mine or whatever. I've been asked that if we could table that until the mayor can be here. So, and that's, that's out of consideration for him and for Cody and them to get their ducks in a row.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to go to closed session for item number eight.
Okay. What time is it?
I second it.
What time do you have, Manuel?
Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-five.